This is, we are going to be taking up the update to the comprehensive plan, which was written back in 2010. We did have a meeting earlier today at 2:00 P.M., so this is actually a continuation of that meeting. So this way folks have had sort of a dual opportunity, whether it was 10:00 in the afternoon or in the evening. And this is the first time we've done it this way. So hopefully, we've managed to accommodate everyone. So attending are Commissioners Duncan and Philios. Commissioner Brooks is on medical leave. And so, without further delay, I will ask Director David Callahan if he's in and has any comments that he'd like to make.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think for the current audience's sake, I should repeat myself for 2:00 this afternoon. First of all, my apologies to anyone that was confused about how this document and this document go together. It has been the planning commission's message, a staff message on the Internet since April of this year. I've, you know, we've done what we can to make it clear that this language updates the goals, objectives, and policies, and would replace them if adopted, of the goals, objectives, and policies in here. But it does not take away the existing data, the existing maps, or any of the other old language that's in this document. So since this is the county's currently adopted comprehensive plan, this update is a first of a series of steps that the planning commission wants to conduct. The other quick things I should say is that the Commissioners have a message from me in the way of a memo that provides background process, explanation of the public participation that's going into this, and the planning commission's hearing, they also have a literal strike through and write out, and underline, I mean, that the planning commission did tonight of their hearing. And they have it in a different format, just easier to understand. And the Commissioners also have Pat Braden, my legal counsel's full strikeout redline of this document. So that they understand that, again, that these goals, objectives, policies, which the plan, those that are in our current comprehensive plan, if at some point in the future you choose to approve them. I did also at 2:00 mention that if Commissioners go so far as to approve this update, we would like their authority to make minor grammatical and syntactical changes, because in any sort of document like this, they inevitably arise after we've adopted something. I've been over this countless times. I have found a few. I'll just read one quick example into the record, the sort of thing we would like to be able to change. On page 10, under proposed objective 3, policy 1, it currently reads, "Inventory where land use development does negatively affect water quality." So it makes better grammatical sense, in my view, to say inventory where land use development negativ- negatively affects water quality. Strike that out. That's the sort of thing we would like authority to do.
Okay.
If you have any questions about anything like that, that and I are here for you, and of course, creating the background. But that really covers, I believe, everything I went over at 2:00, unless you think I've missed something. Thank you.
I think we're fine. Okay, so I just introduced some of the players here. Immediately to your left is Nancy Jones. She's our communications manager, and she's handling, this is the first attempt to videotape in this environment. And so, we do have cameras. The cameras are capable of panning, so hopefully, it'll provide some decent entertainment for folks. Of course, you just heard from David Callahan, Director of Community Development, and Pat Braden, Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney, who hopefully keeps us out of trouble. What we did this afternoon, we allowed people, customarily, we go three minutes, so we allowed for five, and we'll do the same this evening. If you move around a little bit, it's not a big deal, because we don't have a very big crowd. We had about 20 to 25 people present this afternoon. So what we'll do is, you will be timed. When the yellow light goes on, it's a 30-second warning, if you will. So Kathy Ford will be monitoring your time. So we do have some folks that signed in this afternoon that presumably were going to be here this evening. I don't see them, or at least I don't see one, at least one of them. And that's Kenny Moore. I'll call him out first. 31048 East Hayden Lake Road, Hayden, Idaho. 83835. He is not present. He did ask a question, which I think Director Callahan just answered, which is, was the purpose of the Commissioners to join the old comp plan with the new comp plan, or to replace the old comp plan? And I think he answered that by indicating it is an update. Okay. And then we have Ms. Audra Holm. Not present, I take it? Okay. And her comment is, "I oppose the plan as it is presented to the public." And also, having submitted this this afternoon, Debbie Toll. I presume Debbie's not present. 4089 Pleasant Lane, Post Falls, Idaho. "Please slow down the growth. We are losing our rural areas." Okay. So we'll move on to folks that have, I guess, come this evening. Daniel Ousley? Yes, sir. You're welcome to speak. Your address, please?
37593 East Hayden Lake Road in Hayden, Idaho.
Go right ahead.
I, first off, I wanted to say thank you for the work on this. It's really well done. I got to see this leaf, leaf, one of the meetings in the summer, and it's, like I said, it's really well done. It's condensing down a lot of complexities. In my job, I have to deal with very complex regulations on a regular basis, and I have seen the absolute nightmare that complex and badly written regulations can create. A couple of comments. The school district section policies 2 and 3 refers to 50 or more units coordinating, developers being coordinated with the schools. Would this regulation allow for, for example, the county to offer incentives to developers to set aside land for schools? Is that something that would be possible with this sort of regulation? Or is it, or is it just ensuring, you know, encouraging coordination?
Director Callahan?
I'll opine first, and then our legal counsel jump in. But no, this doesn't get to a requirement of any sort. And if I may, just suggest that this is a comprehensive plan update as a guide. We aren't dealing with regulations at this point.
Sure. I'm just wondering if the county chose to say, yes, for this particular development, we want to offer some sort of incentives, would this type of policy code allow the county to do something like that?
It could lead to regulations that do just that.
Okay.
But of course, those would have to be proposed, been adopted through the organs and option process.
Okay.
This would just be a policy that could, you know, start that ball rolling.
For discussion.
And then let me just interrupt you, if I may. This is your time. This is your time to speak. We're basically here to listen and take notes, but go right ahead.
The other area that really stood out to me, land use policy number 2 is referring to rural character and developments that are 50 or more units required to work to maintain that rural character. I think that strikes a really good balance. They consider lowering that number, but I think 50 is a really good number. But overall, I really wanted to compliment you guys on all the work that's been done on this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Brent, Brent Regan?
Oh.
Oh, he needs your address. Got your name?
6100 East Borley Road. First, I want to thank you for extending the meeting to the evening, so that those of us who work for jobs can come and attend. I know it's a position on you, but I just appreciate it. I, um, the comprehensive plan is a strategic plan for the county, and so it's best if it's as short and brief and concise as possible, so that it doesn't be necessary in other areas. The 2010 plan had a bunch of filler and fluff with information and data that could see a lot of stuff in there, and inflated it up to some 200 pages. I think this exercise proves that what the essence of the strategic plan is this nice little 16-page document. And I read it back in April and thought, hallelujah, this is wonderful. It's been simplified, a lot of the requirements have been brought back to a reasonable level, and while it's not a perfect document, I think it was a great improvement over what was there before. You know, no human endeavor is perfect, even the Constitution has 10 revisions and the first 10 amendments, so no work required for it to pass on. So I'm happy to make incremental steps towards a better document. I don't really have anything specific that I can say tonight, because we learned that the document, and David Callahan has been very helpful here in the shadows. This document is now going to get merged into the other plan, so that has to be considered as a reality, and I haven't done that yet, frankly. I haven't had time to do it. But I have a modest suggestion for you, and that, since this really is the essence of it, keep this as a comprehensive plan, and add filler and information and data as an addendum. Okay? So that that now is a separate document, and when we want to talk about revising, we only look at 16 pages, not 216. And that, you know, the more there is, the more inertia there is, and the more difficult it is to go and pick the darn thing up and read through. So my humble advice to you this evening is, you've got this already separated out. Keep it that way. Add the rest of the 2010 as an addendum, and then you'll be able, those that we produced the comprehensive plan to 200 pages to 16. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Howard. Address, please.
The address that I own in this county is 4340 West Perry Wing Lane, but I also live in the city postfalls of 2855, who knows, what?
So which one would you like us to use?
We'll use Centrepway, that's what I wrote on the paper.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Scott Howard. Again, thank you for having this, the time that people who work regularly can attend. I do want to say I am deeply concerned with the direction that the county is going with this comprehensive plan update. According to the Idaho Code, the first thing that any plan must do, and I'll quote, is ensure that land use policies, restrictions, conditions, and fees do not violate private property rights adversely impact property values, or create unnecessary technical limitations on the business of property. This update actually does just that. The 2010 comprehensive plan clearly denies that they are protecting private property rights, and it's paramount by stating, even in the goals, protect private property rights while implementing overall policies to ensure the public's well-being, and again, protect private property rights or property rights and the orderly process of government by ensuring land development permanent decisions are reviewed and decided in a timely and predictable manner. That's in the current 2010 comprehensive plan. However, this update clearly devalues these rights. It implies that the government itself has rights over property owners. By changing the language of the goals, I'll quote, "To adopt land use regulations and zoning that protect property rights while ensuring the public health, safety, general welfare, and natural resource protection needs are met." This puts regulation and zoning in a higher priority than property rights. The update continues with, "Recognize the primacy of owners' rights to use and control their properties in all regulations and policies, and justify any limitations on these rights." This continues to devalue our rights as something to consider, or something that can be limbed. The very first proposed policy in this plan shows contempt for property rights held by the planning board here, by stating, "We should determine the public outlook of property rights. This is not a social issue. This is a right. This right is protected by the Constitution of the United States, as well as the state of Idaho. Outlook is irrelevant. Property owners should be free to use their property as they see fit. This comprehensive plan does not provide that." I want to go out to say that the remainder of the plan, I was barely able to get through because of the glaringness of the property rights violations in that, and so therefore I see the whole plan, it does not continue, and the code, I like.
One question for you.
Yes.
Do you figure in the next maybe three weeks or so that you could go through it and give us a written statement?
Yes.
That would be great. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, some are pushing out.
I have a couple of questions. Oh, I have to do my own.
Yes, you do.
Question 46, even for the side court. So this is the 16-page thing that we all agree on, right? That we like, right? And this is the one I was familiar, you guys saw earlier. This is the cover to the 200-page monstrosity that Northwest Property Owners was founded to get rid of. Now, this is my question before I talk a little more. So from the emails that we've been going back and forth on, I'm understanding you want to take the 16-page one and put it into the 200-page monstrosity. Is that correct, or am I still misunderstanding from the emails?
That's correct, but there's a bunch of strike through, so...
Yes, and I saw the strike through, and it reduces it by like, what, I was guessing like 25 pages, which I was like, that's a start, but it's still a monstrosity of the document.
Right.
Because I went back, I recorded the afternoon meeting, and it wasn't the first couple of minutes. I sent that to you guys on YouTube, like I was sure you had time, two o'clock in here later. And I think I said, was it ahead of the planning zone?
Before David?
No.
I mean, David Levine.
Oh, David Levine, I'm sorry.
I was like, lock that David, the other one. Because he said, "We are here to hear comments on the comprehensive plan." This is my, not word for word, but this comprehensive plan links to land use code. This is not land use code. And he holds up this, but he said, "This is the comprehensive plan." And so to me, and I think that may be where a lot of us are getting misunderstandings, because me and other people were like, great, this is the only comprehensive plan. It's only 16 pages long. Then I completely agree with Brent. Stay with just this. This is marvelous. We agreed on it, we hashed it over, we've had tons of positive comments since like what, April or May? But then this one came back up. This has, and I think I sent you guys at first a more detailed email, this one still has wildlife orders, view sheds, and has unified land use code that Northwest Property Owners and I have fought against. And it talks about the community designs and the village-based stuff that was fought against, where they'd say, oh, if you have 10 acres, you can only do this type of housing. You can't send it by, you know that. So my point today was, and I was accused in email of attacking Mr. Callahan, I just feel like this was not communicated well. I do do some communication marketing stuff for a living, and if it's communicated well, I'll keep communicating, because I didn't understand that this one was still in play. And I read this whole one. I skimmed through this one in the last 24 hours, because I'm a sick kid, and I'd like to have more time to go back and read the whole thing, and trust me, I'll give you another pages and pages of notes, but like, you asked the other guy, I'd love to have some weeks to read it, a little time over, thanks to me. But to me, I think it was miscommunicated, because I feel like you guys haven't been telling us this is going to go under the older one. That's why I was saying, this is made in switch, because that was never explained, and I have recordings from the workshops, from the community meeting. I didn't hear that, I didn't understand that, and that's why I brought those two from, because I thought, maybe with all the lingo, something got lost in translation. I wasn't meaning to accuse anyone of anything, but I was like, this is not what we all agreed on. We had this wonderful sort of document, and this other thing just sprung upon us, and we're all here going, what did you guys do? We're on the right track. So those are my comments.
Okay. Two things, you do have time to get your comments in. The second thing is, this is a step process, so it will go back to Planning Commission eventually to review more stuff. And third, full disclosure, I was under the impression too, that that was our new document.
Well, and my issue with that is, okay, so if you guys vote for the green one, does that mean this one is automatically approved to be updated to be a 2019 copy?
So, yes.
In a sense, that is the case, because...
Because I feel like we're not reading it before we adopt it, which sounds like the other political things that have caused problems. It also reminds me of Port Alene, well, everything will be okay, we'll keep your term of returning. If you guys want to always be Commissioners, you may agree to it, and you may not be here in a couple of years, and I don't want to hold other future Commissioners to what you guys have said, because it won't happen, and then we'll all be broken with each other. And so that's my other concern, is I really don't want this one passed at all. I agree with Greg's comment, it should just be this, and we can add this stuff in piecemeal instead of the other way around.
Okay, so the 16-page document is an update to the 2010 plan. The 2010 plan, and, you know, we invite David and Pat to opine here if they choose to, is, the 2010 plan is not eliminated. Now, I think Brent made a good suggestion, where he said, well, maybe we ought to go with the 16-page document and treat the 2010 as an appendix or an addendum of some sort, because it does contain a lot of statistical data.
Right.
Even though some of that probably needs to be updated, but that's beside it.
And some of the wording contradicts the new wording, where I noticed in our newer one, voluntary wildlife orders, voluntary view sheds, which I was really happy about personally, there's some wording that contradicts that in the old one, where I was like, what? And the whole village thing was filed, where those weird wordings of different zoning is still in there, and that's what brings up a lot of concerns. So I would agree as an addendum, and that we can keep going through this, that it isn't all passed, and now it's going to be turned into code, that we can keep. I want it to be in a whole document that we can keep reexamining.
David, Pat?
I, for one, am perfectly fine with the addendum appendix idea, it's just that the planning commission is the author of this document. I have really disposed of it, but the planning commission would have that.
Yeah, to me, it'd be simply a matter of organization, you know, have the four seats fit to do it, you know, I don't think that would be a legitimate change.
Okay, so that would not necessitate another public hearing, then?
Okay. My only other comment was coming from a web pageant designer, play a few. This is really easy to find, if you know where to look. This is six to eight menus down in your page. And to me, if I look at, if I find his name, or I find planning and zoning, this should be on the top, especially when there's a public hearing about it coming up in the next month. This is six to eight submenus down, and I searched in the bar, you don't get this one, you need to get that one in your search. So my comment would be, what is something I missed that needs to be, even if it's temporarily moved up to where it's easier to get to, because not everyone has the time to go and look where it is? Because I got emails back with the long link, and I thought, if I wasn't on Facebook, I wouldn't know where to look to find some of this stuff, which isn't necessarily the person's fault, but, you know, putting it not so many submenus down would be better.
Understood. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? No?
No.
Yeah, go right ahead. Come right forward. Need your name and address, please?
My name is Haika Yenat, 202, agency court for the lane. I know. And I do want to thank you that you're putting on this meeting at night, because a lot of people do work, and they cannot take off. So when I got this email, I was really, really thrilled that you guys are making as possible for working people to come. So what I did, and I had two hours off after work, I skimmed through both. I skimmed through the 16-page one, and then I found a miracle, the 200-page one. And so I just walked in here and sitting here, and I was listening to the other people here, and I really liked the idea of having the short one, and having the other one, the 200-page one, as an addendum. I think, you know, this is so awesome. When I first saw this, I thought, oh, this is, this is all 16 pages, this is wonderful. Everybody can read this in one afternoon or one night. Why make it complicated for the everyday citizens? I mean, you guys are working for us, and I think you're doing an excellent job, but you can make it easy for us, because we have jobs, you know? And then, you know, have it in plain language, where, you know, even a person with a GED can understand it, and I'm not trying to put these people down, my son has a GED, and he is now making good money, so. But my point is, yeah, and then what I've also noticed, that you guys changed this promote open space and wildlife corridor to voluntarily. I just wish we wouldn't take out completely, but I think it's a first good step, because this is about private property, right? I mean, we're, you know, private property, I don't know, I kind of have to agree with the first person said, you know, this is a little bit, this is too muddling to me, you know? I mean, if I, if I own, this is what I think, if somebody wants to dedicate their property to wildlife or open space, they will do it without us promoting it in a, in a plan. I mean, people are so awake in today's world, you know? They want to preserve our environment, you know? And why do we have to state it in here over and over and over again? That kind of wraps me, you know, not in the right position. But other than that, yeah, I think you guys have done a great job, but it probably could be a little bit more enhanced. And so my next question is, can citizens just write you guys an email with comments?
Absolutely.
Yes, to be more specific, and so just write to each of you guys?
Yeah, you would send it basically to the KCBOCC, Kootenay County.
Yeah, we can get you that.
We'll get you the address.
Okay.
And this way, we'll all get it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question.
Want to come forward, sure.
My name is Michael Burgess. I live in Post Falls, 2083 Northwest Wing Drive. So I noticed that there was a vote of 4-3. I understand I'm right to bring this meeting about. Is there a record of those who were against doing it, and positions on why they didn't want to?
There is a record of the vote, yes. If they deliberated, that would be available.
We have the deliberations, but I was at the meeting, and there weren't statements as to why.
Okay. Just as an individual, this time, for all the nuts and bolts, it's nice to see what some of those who are used to working with it, what they're saying, as kind of a starting place. That's why I wanted to ask that.
Okay.
And I would like to thank the gentleman in blue for his statement. If I had had time, that's what I would have talked about. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm against the plan as it is, because of that, it was present form.
You mean the 16-page, the current one, or the 2010?
The, as I understood it, both still had problems with the property rights.
Okay, so you're agreeing with the gentleman who spoke earlier?
Yes.
Who felt that the 2010 plan did a better job of protecting property rights?
I don't know that.
Okay, you don't? Okay, I don't want to put words in your mouth, okay?
I guess I didn't understand that he was saying that 2010 one was better, but I agreed with his perceptions of what was bad.
Okay, got it.
But I do like the idea of the 16-page. I agree with that.
Okay.
That idea. There might be some problems with some of the words, some of the property rights.
Okay.
I don't want to belabor that until I'm a little more, you know...
Thank you.
Feel free to give us written comments.
So...
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So is there a motion then to close public testimony and potentially enter into deliberations?
Yes, I move that we close public testimony and enter into deliberations with potentially continuing deliberations to a date in the future.
So then are you in favor of the continuance of deliberations?
I think so. I think some of the issues raised this afternoon and tonight, I'd like to dig a little deeper into. I'm definitely in favor of the 16-page plus addendum, and so, yeah, then I have a couple dates.
Okay, wonderful. So I would agree too, that we not deliberate this evening, that we continue and postpone deliberations, so that we can take into account all of the comments that we received. And by the way, because this is a legislative hearing, you're free to continue submitting comments up until the time we actually do enter into deliberations, and we'll make that decision tonight as to when, and you can help us make that decision, by the way. And so, Leslie, you want to go ahead and offer a couple of options here?
Um, so...
Do you want to have, well, do you want to vote on the motion now, or do you want to vote after we've actually... Close the hearing, if you guys want to.
All right, we'll close the hearing.
Yeah, just close the whole public testimony.
Okay.
To continue to receive.
I think we just need a second. I close these.
You just need a second, okay, then I do second to close public hearing and continue deliberations.
Bill Brooks is excused, Commissioner Duncan? Aye. Chairman Philios?
Aye. So deliberations are continued to a date yet to be determined, go right ahead, Leslie.
So I do have opening on the calendar for December nineteenth at nine AM, but I understand that, you know, people who work may want to come listen to deliberations. So the next available that we have is January twenty-third at six PM.
Yep.
So is that?
Sounds good.
Okay, then we'll continue deliberations on January twenty-third at six PM.
You want to form a motion?
I move that we do that.
And I second.
Bill Brooks is excused, Commissioner Duncan? Aye. Chairman Philios?
Aye. Okay, so continued deliberations. And just for everybody's benefit, what occurs during deliberations, I suspect most of you are probably aware, that's basically a discussion among the three of us. We are at liberty to ask questions of staff, but it is exclusively for the three of us to deliberate and come to a conclusion, okay?
And if you could have all your comments by the end of the year, then that would give me three weeks, give us three weeks to examine all the written comments. So that'd be appreciated.
And at that point, or at this point, it is now, six thirty-three, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.